Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you were. We'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to start with the approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes from executive session held on March twentieth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr, so those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the budget work session held on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr, a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. That now brings us to our department committee reports, and we'll have the treasurer's report, Charles.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Let me start with our financial results for the period just ended. Our revenue continues to be very strong. We're at about seventeen million dollars so far this fiscal year, which is seven percent of all of our budget. We can talk about each department is doing very well, Core, Stacks, Village Law with our investments, and the building public very well. In terms of significant transactions this month, we did receive payment from the town of Southampton for the emergency services that we provide to NOAC at Paypoint. That's pretty sizable. That's a million and a half dollars per year. So that's good inflow in the month of March. In terms of expenditures, our expenses continue to be in line with budget, and the expenditures themselves are routine, mostly payroll and related benefits on the payroll. And also, the only really significant non-payroll-related expenditure recently was for dispatch services that are provided by the village of East Hampton. That's about three hundred thousand dollars, dispatch for police and ambulance, some fire ambulances. Moving on to the budget, on the agenda tonight, there are resolutions to adopt the budgets, the general fund and the sewer fund. I urge you to vote in favor of those. We've reviewed the details two weeks ago, remains unchanged from that last meeting. In the general fund, you know, we, I think we've done a good job of keeping it close to the residents in check. Our mill rate is, let me make sure I get this right, two point eight one five, which translates into a one point three percent increase year over year. So despite the fact that our expenses are going up by more than, by about four percent, we do have our good revenue base within the village that allows us to mitigate the impact on the tax rate to the residents. So one point three percent increase on the tax. And then the sewer fund, you know, our expenses are going up there quite a bit. We do have a good revenue base, but it's not quite deep enough with the expenditures. So we do find that we have to raise our rates for both usage and rentals, as we did last year, and to get the budget in a position where we can operate the sewer. So that's it for my report. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That now brings us to the department reports, and I'll begin with the police department, fire department, and ambulance corps. So for the Sag Harbor Village Police Department, in the month of March twenty twenty five, the police department responded to six hundred and eighty-three calls for service. We had eight aggravated unlicensed operation. We had twenty-five suspended registrations. That seems like a lot. We had one DWI arrest, one open container, one LSA with injuries. We had four motor vehicle accidents. There were thirty-six arrests, which, there was one DWI, as I stated, and we had a hundred and thirty-two uniform traffic tickets issued. Just want to make a note on this report that I have had some residents in the village that are concerned about traffic, you know, upcoming in the summer, and are curious as to, are there any measures that we're going to be putting in place to try to alleviate traffic? You know, any hazards that are on the road. As you know, we're currently engaged with PSEG and the transition line that they're putting through the village, which seems to be moving along pretty swiftly. So hopefully it will be done before Memorial Day. So that concludes the police department report. Brings me to the fire department. And I'd first like to start off with the results of the chief selections. So the Sag Harbor Board of Wardens would like to advise the village of the following for Sag Harbor Fire Department twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. As I said, they held the chief's elections and the results are as follows. Chief of department will be Michael Guyer, first assistant chief will be J.R. Wilson, and second assistant chief will be Howie Klein Smith the fourth. And that brings us to our fire department report. In the month of March twenty twenty five, the members of the fire department volunteered for one thousand three hundred and two man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to forty-four calls for service. These calls included four mutual aids to house fires, two motor vehicle accidents, one struck gas line, and one mutual aid to a brush fire, in addition to all of the false alarms. In years past, March has been a slow month. This year, it's been quite the opposite, especially with the massive brush fire that we had along Sunrise Highway. Nearly eighty departments spent countless hours to bring this under control, and it's a perfect example of how there's times when we all need to come together, and I mean all of us, to help out. So I'd like to thank our new chief, Mike Guyer, for his report. I'd also like to state under the fire department that the fire boat that we approved and budgeted for is underway. We've been getting updated photographs. The hall has been completed, so that project's moving along. It's expected to be delivered sometime in October of this year.
That's great news.
So. That brings us to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And the following is for March twenty twenty five, emergency calls, we had fifty-six. We had five work nights, two meetings, two training sessions, for a total of seven hundred and forty-seven man-hours. And I would just like to thank the members of the volunteer ambulance corps, ambulance corps, excuse me, for all that they do, and I appreciate their efforts. They did pass or in the process of passing a new bylaw, which will enable college students that are home from college in the summer to volunteer for the ambulance corps and help out. So that's going to be a new added membership.
Right.
So that concludes my reports. I think we'll have to dispense with trustee Hayes' reports. He's not feeling well. He's undergone surgery, and we're hoping to get him back. I did speak to him on the phone. He seems to be feeling better, so I think shortly he'll be rejoining us. And that brings us to trustee Corr with the sewer department, village grants, and the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll start the sewage treatment plant and the report for March twenty five. Total gallons received, one million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand gallons. We removed twenty-one thousand gallons of sludge. The DMR reports were forwarded on three five. Suffolk County DHL inspection, the next inspection is set for oh five thirteen, thirteenth of May. The New York State D.C. inspection date is always, it's open, and we had no complaints. About the March and summary of operations, wastewater treatment plant running well, under all permitted levels, and we're currently operating two of the five basins. All the grease traps were inspected with two failures. Both were brought into compliance within three business days, which is the requirement, and that's pretty good. That's about as good as we've had for a long time. So I'd just like to, you know, thank everybody out there for taking care of the grease traps. You know, it's not very glamorous, but it's pretty, it's really necessary. Benson Contracting was out to set limits on basin number four, influence valve. And also, there was an assessment of packing gland leak and pump number one and the dry well. Mixer number two rebuild was completed and reinstalled. That's a pretty big project, so that's great news that that's back in there. And the flow from February through March was increased by a hundred and ninety-two gallons, so you can feel that things are just starting to pick up. On grants, we are in a discussion and sort of planning phase. We have two grants out there. We're waiting to get results from East Hampton and Southampton CPF for the last round. Gene and I and Drew Harvey had meetings this week with grant writer Jen Messiana, there was a New York State grant was available for parks, and we're trying to find something that fits. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit more detail later. But we had a pretty productive discussion, so we're hoping that we can find something that works. Sometimes you have to, you know, cut your cloth to suit the requirements of the state. Mary Ann Eddy and I were discussing other water quality grants, and we weren't able to bring it to fruition this time, but I think the information we uncovered is going to help us enormously moving ahead for the next round. So we might look at July where the consolidated funding application to New York State is open. Other than that, that is pretty much the activity on the grant side. The zoning board of appeals is running well. I think it's a good board, has not had any issues that I've been brought aware of, and the board have not reached out to me with any issues either. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Corr. That brings us to trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation, and Architectural Review.
Thank you, Mayor. From the DRL superintendent of Public Works, spring cleanup, well, parking lots, parks, open spaces continuing. The new clock has been installed this month in front of the building. If anybody's noticed that, it's beautiful thing. All roads continue to be swept, highway maintenance crews assigned, assistant harbor master, commission of B dock and the dinghy docks down there for the twenty-five season. As well, repair and patching continues, crews continue tree trimming. Highway crews are continuing assessing signage, cleaning, replacing as needed, the general traffic signs in the village. Several road shoulders have been repaired with road millings, which means that when it gets worn out, he puts them, ground up as well in there. The Port of Sag Harbor sign was removed from Waymont and refurbished by DPW and reinstalls. Cleaning and painting the anti-light posts is commensurate, will continue through the warm months. There also, they're doing one round of brush pickup, just once per street. And it's not on here, but I think it's from the, starting next Monday. But it's on the website. It's in the paper, so if you put your stuff out, yeah, pick it up.
Last chance, last chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and the HVARB is plugging along. As I say, we may have some new faces after the election, but, you know, we'll see about that. This is from Environmental Action Committee, Mary Ann. Again, a lot of complaints about non-compliant light fixtures with the houses, residences, and along Main Street. Maybe it's because it's dark and there are no leaves or something, but anyway. So Dakota Forestman is going to be working in the evenings. They do anyway, mostly to check the restaurant capacities and whatnot. So we're trying to make a list of the offending fixtures, and when he has time, he's going to go by and take a picture of them, and we will contact the owners and see what we can do. Largely, they're just the uplights that they put on trees. They're supposed to put the light in the top and shine it down. Thanks to, largely thanks to Mary Ann, we're figuring out how to spend the fifty thousand dollar grant that they got for the solar system at the sewer treatment plant. And so they're recommending mostly work in this building now, because this one shows up, this is an energy-consuming building. Man, because it's old and leaky, whatever, but we've been working on that. And finally, Carbon Crew, which is a local group, not a local group, it's actually a national group, but they've been having office hours online where twenty to thirty high schoolers can join Zoom calls and ask questions about how to lower their carbon footprint, just in general. So it's good to get the kids, because a lot of them are really interested in it, and they're concerned about the future of the climate, of the planet. So that's a good thing, and that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Plum. So that brings us to trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbors and Docks, and the Harbor Committee.
Okay, great. I will start with the harbor and docks. For the month of March, they were actually busy, and to trustee Plum, the, it was both the highway department and the harbor master, Dorye and Bori, were putting together the dinghy docks and put them back in the water. Galen Marine was active, putting the channel markers back in. And they're also, for any of the village-owned moorings, they've been put in place. So we're getting ready for the season with reservations. They continue to be very strong for this upcoming season. All the dock slips, the mooring, and even the outer mooring fields are all full. The only point where we have a few open spots available is at the Water Street Cables at this time. So just everyone to be aware of that. So looks again to have a great, successful season coming up. With regard to the marine patrol boat that was put back in service, we had wrapped that up, stored it, now it's back in. And harbor master Dorye and Bori did a lot of work at the dock master's skiff. They, they're trying to do as much work as they can, so we don't need to be charging out. So whether they painted, they rubbed the rail, they put new decals, they're busy getting ready, as I say. There was, on March twenty-fourth, there was a marine patrol call with reference to a deceased dolphin that was right near Sag Harbor Yacht Club. So harbor master Bori and Dorye responded. They were able to remove the dolphin and work with the Atlantic Marine Conservation Society, who responded quickly and brought the dolphin to East Hampton so it could be examined. So that happened on the twenty-fourth, and then on March twenty-ninth, there was a nine-one-one call received from East Hampton Emergency Communications that there was an individual in a kayak out in Sag Harbor Bay, close to the North Haven side. And fortunately, the other kayaker's phone worked, and he was able to help them get there very quickly. They were able to rescue the individual. And just to be aware, you know, the water was below, or in the low forties, so fortunately, it wasn't a tragedy, which it was avoided. So again, very busy in the month of March, which you don't really expect this time of year to be having voters out there. And then what you will see is the RFP for the replacement of the A dock and the new floating dock. We did receive those from LKMA, so we'll review that tonight. And then last, so for the harbor committee, I think everything seems to be proceeding as we hope and expect, continues. For the dollars on the docks, I just want to say, we're running for this year at a million five sixty-one odd, and that's about sixteen percent ahead of last year's money. So that looks good there. With regard to the building department, revenues are running really identical to this time last year. You know, we always say it can be lumpy months, but it's very interesting that it's identical to last year. I don't think I've ever had that yet, so, but it was a good pace last year, so that we hope it's going to be a full, good year this year. When we look to see the activity in the building department, there were ten building permits issued, there were eleven rental permits. So good news is, we still have people actively coming in and registering for the rental permits, which we just, you know, constantly want to encourage that. There were seventy-two inspections, thirteen certificate of occupancies, and seventeen violations. With regard to the fire marshal, he was very busy as well. He had fourteen complaints, seventeen violations. As we, as we see, there's special events. We have a lot of applications, so he reviewed six of those for this month. These will be for events later in the summer. There were four fire department alarms, and then nine follow-ups with regard to those. With tree inspection, tree removal inspections, there were six. So he is, what's really nice to see is the landscapers and the arborists are very proactive and call the building department. They want to make sure they're operating properly, and it seems to really be working well that we see this proactive, because they don't want to violate at all. So there's a really good process that's going on, so I just wanted to share that with everyone. And then in North Haven, our inspector did four investigations and follow-ups, and then four separate general patrols. So we continue to be busy working there. And then I wanted to, this will be, this is POSAC, which normally trustee Hay would be reporting on that. I want to invite John Chaka and Drew Harvey to come up and speak. As Aiden, as trustee Corr mentioned.
I would, I would wait till after we're done with the reports.
Okay, you want to wait?
Yes. So you're done?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I need a motion. I'm just trying to run the meeting in order. So I need a motion to accept the department reports.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Corr, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. That now brings us to public comments. Fifteen-minute public session, input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker concerning treasurer's report or any department reports. And I would welcome chairman Shaka and Mr. Harvey to come forward and do their presentation first.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, thank you for having us. I want to just make clear that why I'm chairman of the planning board. Drew's on the planning board, but we are not here to partake in this. This has nothing to do with planning board. We're here as members of the POSAC, which is an official Parks and Open Space Committee. So that's why we're here, and frankly, Drew's baby, for a long time, we've handed over the thing. But we've been working on this particular thing for the past month or so. Trustee Corr referred to a grant, which was the initiator of this, and trustee Kane and Hay brought to our attention. So we've been talking about that, that's why we've come to this particular point tonight. So you want to take it?
Yeah, Drew Harvey, never been planning board, but not here on behalf of that tonight. Here on behalf of the Parks and Open Space Committee, with your representative, trustee Hay, trustee Kane. So ultimately, what we're talking about is the parklands parcel that is currently owned by Suffolk County, County Southampton, and the village of Sag Harbor, which is Silly Farm. This is only focused on the nine acres that is currently owned by the county, town, and village. The Parks and Open Space Committee, in identifying some of the larger parklands parcels of the village, you're pretty much looking at Havens Beach and Silly Farm Park. Silly Farm Park is not something that the village was hyper-aware of for a long time. It was purchased in two thousand. But now, kind of finally, we have the county, town, and village operating on the same wavelength and are in contact and want to kind of move forward with very, very kind of basic and straightforward project ideas, which we're calling Phase One. So ultimately, we've laid out a preliminary plan with a couple of ones that have been losing as part of Phase One. A is clean up this site, which is removal of the previously dumped concrete road debris that's in there. Dump trash and metallurgical debris, all on top of the surface at this point. And then to identify and tag invasive species that need to be removed. You see cases like Vineyard Field in Berchampton, you let it continue to go on the path that it's on, invasive species are going to completely take over the property, and it's going to be a bigger project every year that we kind of put this off.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
So this isn't the first time I've heard this. This is like the third or fourth time you've come before the board and asked to do this.
Yep.
So my question is, I'm going to let you finish, what's the holdup?
So if you want to look right down the next steps, adopt an intermunicipal agreement, it's an IMA. Every time I propose this, it's been very clear that the next step is for the village, the town, and the county to enter into an IMA, to put forth a plan that allows people to go into this site and make it whatever those three municipalities want it to be. Up until this point, the village and the town have never followed up with the county's request to move forward with an IMA agreement.
Who's doing the drawing? Who's doing something that we can present to them? Is any, are you or anyone? Because we can't just walk in with this, right?
No, so an IMA doesn't require any of this. An IMA was supposed to be drafted immediately after the parcel is purchased twenty-five years ago. It was left to the town to push this forward. The town says that we'd like the village to push it forward. The county says, we're ready to go when you guys are. Once the village identifies a plan that they like, a preliminary plan, we can move forward with getting funding and putting together a comprehensive plan, and then inputting that plan in this property. So this is a preliminary concept plan, because we don't have anything until we have an idea of what the county, town, and village see is going in this property.
I think they're waiting for us, or you, or somebody to tell them, as a suggestion, this is maybe what we'd like to do. Then they comment.
So.
So this image is the suggestion. Three trailheads, making those three trailheads with trails, removing all of the concrete road debris, making it safe for the public to enter, removing invasive species so it doesn't become overgrown, and then putting in a small parking area for people to access the park. These very basic things, the county is on board with, the town is on board with, and I hope that the village is on board with. So the next step is to draft that IMA, finalize.
So, no, actually, so what I would say, actually.
This is not, this is a little disturbing, because this is not the first time we've heard this. I mean, am I incorrect here?
No.
No, you're correct.
Over the years, with Tommy John, we had looked at areas of this to set aside some acreage that we could in the future for water treatment, so that we could have community IA system that could serve the Redwood area. And I'm not saying it can't be part of all this, but somewhere, we need sort of a more holistic look at this, so that we can all.
I'm all for, like, starting.
I think it's a great idea, but this is.
I think we should work on the IMA.
Yeah.
I think that we should propose doing these basic steps first to clean up the area. But I think that we should also have a public session.
Yeah.
For the village to have their residents come forward and see what their vision could be.
So what I would say to all the points that have been made, our clerk sent a draft of the IMA in October of two thousand twenty-three to Southampton Town and to the county, and then it was just basically not a priority for them at the different times. The good news is, because we heard about this grant and then had a conversation, it was Aiden and our clerk, along with our grant writer, we walked through how to try to do this. This was just last week. This is what's promoting it. The county has responded positively, and then I, just before this meeting, had a long conversation with Southampton Town representative, and they can get the authorization to sign this at their April twenty-fourth.
To sign which?
To sign the resolution that supervisor Moore can.
For the IMA?
Yes.
Okay, so we can work together.
So this is all, it's moving at a somewhat quick speed.
Would the county, the town, and the village not want to have representatives on an oversight board of some sort?
Yes, and so.
Whatever that structure would be.
Yes, and to, to your point.
Let me just jump in here. All of these things will be outlined in the IMA.
Okay.
So that's, that's like, I hate to be kind of curt, but the IMA, I was told, it has nothing to do with anyone else besides the village, the town, and the county. They have to hash out, they're all joint owners of this property. Who's in charge of implementing plans? Who's in charge of producing plans? How do we decide who puts in what plan? That IMA is a legal document that outlines that for those businesses.
So to a large extent, we'd need public input from the county and the town and the village.
It's a negotiation, it's an agreement, it's an intermunicipal agreement between the three different municipalities to manage the property.
Who drafts the IMA?
The attorneys. It would be me. It would be me and the other people, you know, get together and.
So are we going to use this outline? Or we could, I guess, right?
But the agreement is a management agreement as opposed to.
I think that what'll happen is, we'll make suggestions.
Okay.
And council will come up with the document and we'll craft it.
But all of this is subservient to the IMA. Before, we can't do any of this until.
Nope.
So why don't we focus on the IMA for now?
Right.
Then we can come back to this.
That's why I interrupted.
Yeah, okay.
May I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Just one other item, and that we mentioned at the outset, which was the grant which is available, which was made, we were made aware of, is due May two. What, the reason we're bringing this up to you now is because we see an opportunity to do the very basic steps. Whatever happens to this piece of property going forward, whether it's six months from now or five years from now, you want to have garbage removed. You want to have signs that let the public know that it's a public space and they're allowed there. And you want to make sure that invasive species don't take over the place. That's the very.
Sure.
So we're asking as well that the trustees understand and know that we would like to move forward and make an application for this grant, which is May two. And the town is, is interested and the county is interested. And that's why we're coming here as well.
So the purpose of the grant, we would be requesting money to clean up?
Yes.
Very basic cleanup.
Okay.
Just the phase one.
Which we proposed here.
If you envision sort of, you know, I don't know, Long Palm Greenbelt is.
Yeah.
The trails are no more complicated than that, just simply having a sign saying, hey, you can walk here safely.
Yep.
And a sign on the street saying, hey, you can enter here in three different places.
And Southampton Town has offered that their consultant that they have on board would come over and work with us on all of this too. That's how, that's how interested they are.
On the draft, on the, on this very rudimentary draft.
Yep.
Proposal.
I think we'll be able to work something out.
We can work something out of that by a second.
But we want this included in the IMA that we'll be able to do this.
Yeah.
It's a good opportunity.
No, no, it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, you have a copy of this, Liz?
No, I don't.
You know, just having the opportunity to make this application for a little bit of money, whatever it will be, is also raises the issue to the public as well. So going forward, obviously, hopefully, we'd be involved. But just this very rudimentary
Basic.
beginning is a good place to start.
Yeah, thank you.
And to your point, Aiden, just so you know, the conversations of, about potential of sewer water runoff. Both the county and the town are aware of that.
Yep.
And know that would be a future step, not this immediate peak.
Right, we just have to take that into consideration.
So the major concept plan, which would be the bigger one, we can look at all different options, and that's certainly one of them.
And I don't think anything you're proposing would preclude us from doing that.
No.
There's no structures being built, there's nothing else. So this could, and we're talking about this as being years ahead. And we'd have to go through quite a permit process as well.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I think it's great that someone.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to have any comments? Nada?
I'm just curious about the parking for the summer. Has anything been finalized?
So we've been discussing, myself and trustee Kors, with the school, with superintendent Nichols. They're in the process of working out insurances and coming up with a deal for us to use parking up at the school for the summer for employees. It's going to happen soon.
Yeah, and we've made an official request. We've sent the letter.
If permits are being given out, what would be the situation of somebody, those of us who own businesses here but don't live in the village? Are we included, would we be included in that?
Do you live in the one-one-nine-six-three? Do you live within the school fire protection district?
But I mean, we actually own the property because of the village anyhow. I can leave this for the future when you.
So. Yeah, so what we're thinking of is, we have stickers already for the residents. You're familiar with that program that will allow you to park at the Gas Ball lot and the Meadow Street lot for four hours. And if you're a resident of the village, you don't pay anything. If you're outside of the village but inside of the school district and the fire district, you can get a sticker for fifteen dollars. So you're familiar with that.
But where does the taxpayer, I'm not a resident, but I am a taxpayer in the village. Have you thought about that, the people?
No, what we've done is, the village, the property, the village residents are paying upwards of about seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the Gas Ball lot between insurance and rent, okay? So we did some math, it works out about thirty dollars a household, right? So we, we looked at that and said, if you live outside of the village, and unfortunately, I understand you're a property owner in the village, but that there's lots of things, being a property owner, if you don't reside in the village, you don't vote in the village and everything else. So we drew a line and said, if you live outside the village, you can get the same sticker for fifteen bucks, which is the same as the village resident is paying. It's the same amount, but the payment is being processed differently.
Yeah.
We're also looking for employees parking up at the school. And we've been looking, I plan to take a walk down between the yacht yard and Havens Beach. Or not, it's Havens Beach, Bay Street. That there's room there for maybe thirty or forty spaces that could be designated for employees only. So that's in the works. So between those two, this summer, we hope we could bring on board maybe sixty, seventy, maybe more spaces. We have to hear from the school. We've had a positive response from them. But, you know, it's their decision, not ours.
And that would start in July and August? That'd be for July and August?
Yeah.
They're actually moving forward with it. They're preparing the, they're doing all the insurance. So it's, this is really, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
I think there was one, there was talk about giving stores, basically parking passes that go with the store, not the employee or the car. So if you have different people working, you can give them the.
So each store would get a number of placards that you could distribute to employees. And then they could, because you don't put stickers on employee cars, because if someone stops working in the village, then the sticker's there. So those little details have yet to be worked out. But there's a plan in the works, and we think it'll be, it'll be there in time.
Give me an update, which is what I.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you had your hand up. Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name and where you reside.
Hello, my name is Dean Towshard, I live at fifty-nine Hempstead Street. And I wanted to discuss, the mayor brought up little issues about traffic, and I'm talking about traffic on Hempstead Street. And as you all know, Hempstead Street from one-fourteen through Bay Street is a back doorway through the village that a lot of contractors use. And as you come down off one-fourteen, you're coming downhill on a curve. And everybody hits the gas and they don't slow down. There was, you know, a few years ago, a stop sign was put in at the intersection of Bay and Hempstead that is nominally respected. And what I'm suggesting, and I'm hoping you might consider, is treating it like you've treated Main Street with paint. Putting double yellow lines down, put in some crosswalk, painting crosswalks, using those freestanding, you know, state law pedestrian cross things. Only as a, I'm not suggesting there's a lot of pedestrians there, but to calm the traffic down. It seems like it would be a very simple thing to do. It wouldn't interfere with snow plowing, no, no speed bumps. We've asked for that too, but there seems to be some resistance. But I think just paint a few removable signs would do a lot to slow things down. Because it's a raceway in the summer.
I agree, and I, the traffic calming, the concept of traffic calming is one I'm a hundred percent behind. If you just paint a road, a line down the middle, make the lane a little narrow and put parking over here, maybe with some standards, people audit, people go as fast as they feel safe. And so they hit.
So one-fourteen is a, is a state or county?
State.
State road. So one-fourteen, we don't have jurisdiction, but you're talking about Hempstead.
People get off.
And that's, okay.
Use Hempstead to get to Bay, because there's no stop sign on Bay. So it is a lot of contractors. The other thought which would be, which would take enforcement is having a sign saying, no commercial vehicles on Hempstead to Bay, only for local deliveries or work. You know, if you did that, you could send a list through Suffolk County contractors, you know, the mechanics licenses, and warn the contractors that this would be the case. And maybe do some spotty enforcement to, you know, get the contractors to know not to build it. That's all, you know, it's, as Tom knows.
I live on Hempstead Street.
That's what I was going to say, you know all too well.
It's the thing.
I would, yeah, I would say that, look, this is a systemic problem. The residents in Southampton Village have the same issues with the traffic pouring through residential areas, people trying to cut through to find other routes. I mean, it's a systemic issue. And if there's things that we could do to calm it, I'm all for it. We do have traffic consultants that we've hired. We should make a list, Hempstead Street, I believe there's another couple of areas within the village that we need to have looked at and have them make recommendations as far as how we achieve that. All the ideas that you stated, I think are simple, good ideas that we should consider.
And I used to be a painter.
Okay. But, you know, I, I, look, I have almost thirty years' service in the fire department. I have over fifteen years in the ambulance corps. I know where the dangerous spots are in the village, where, because I've gone to the accidents and I've seen what happens. Thank God, knock on wood, that Hempstead Street, for the most part, has been a safe street. That doesn't mean that that can't change, because as we know, traffic has increased. So getting ahead of the issue, I think, is important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to introduction. We have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on, on Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to consider a local law to amend Village Code three hundred dash nine point one-two, accessory apartments in the R twenty zoning district, and three hundred two point two definitions, accessory apartment, to clarify code positions. As you know, we did have a workshop about this, and we had input from the public. And we've had multiple residents come to us and give us input on this law. So what we're going to do now is open it and schedule the public hearing. Do you want to just do a brief on this?
Just run, run through it. So this would change the owner occupancy section in two ways. First, it would require the owner or owners of the lot upon which the accessory apartment is located to reside in the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment. So, and it would have to be their dog side. So it would allow for an owner of a property to either live in the accessory apartment or live in the primary residence. And that, that was also required to be changed for the definition of accessory apartment. So we had to change that as well. Other than that, we set up two different ways of looking at this. The board from, from the work session you have with the public, it looked like the board wanted to treat the conversion of existing accessory structures to accessory apartments differently than the construction of new accessory apartments. So a conversion of an existing accessory structure to an accessory apartment, you're allowed to take illegally pre-existing, non-conforming accessory structure and convert it into an apartment if you meet the standards herein. And then it's really just compliance with the New York State Building Code and Suffolk County Health Department Health Services and the Fire Code. Then construction of a new accessory apartment would be required to meet the standards set forth in the zoning code as we're currently laid out. And if they don't meet those standards to construct a new accessory apartment, they would need to go to Zonable Appeals if necessary.
I would just, just.
That's the bulk of the law.
I would just let everybody know that, that I watched, East Hampton Town is also in the process of crafting a similar type law. And I just wanted to applaud the board and council for getting ahead of this. We actually have something on paper now that we could use, if this is approved, to show other municipalities, the town can take a look at it. And it's helping not only create more workforce housing, but allowing maybe a single or a couple that may, may be having a hard time paying their taxes to stay on the property and rent out either the house or the A D U.
Right. And this, these changes are in response to real-life situations. We passed this law some time ago, and we're getting feedback. And the changes that council has explained, we think will protect everybody's interests in the village and maintain that balance between the R twenty private residents and the need, desperate need for affordable housing in the village. I think it, it's sort of, it walks that fine line very well. I'd like to thank the mayor for really pushing for this.
Thank you. So I need a motion to schedule a hearing.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, the second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the, this hearing will be scheduled. We need a resolution to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to consider a local law amending Village Code two sixty-five dash forty-one, parking prohibiting during all hours to prohibit parking on the south side of Glover Street. As you know, Glover Street has become a logjam with construction going on. We have cars and trucks parking on both sides. Chief Jake recommended that we do this. Happened to be in agreement. I've had many complaints, not only from residents, but from emergency services, that, that, that road has become an issue.
South, south side is that side?
South side is, yes.
Yeah. Now you use it quite a bit to get back around to Main Street, and you're sort of playing chicken all the way up the road between who goes next.
Yep.
So I, I need a motion to schedule a hearing.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors, second. Seconded by trustee Kane. Those that approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So the hearing is scheduled. Now we have the actual public hearings, proposed budget, public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year, June first, two thousand twenty-five, to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. I need a motion to open.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors. Motion seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearing is now open. Any comments on the budget, on the public? Motion to close?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I need a motion to adopt.
So we have the resolutions for roll call, as the action items one and two coming forward in just a few minutes.
So we'll just hold off on that?
Okay.
All right. Local law to amend Sag Harbor Village Code, Chapter two fifty, taxation, to add ocean rescue squad members as eligible to receive a property tax exemption pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law four sixty-six dash M. So this will allow those that serve on the ocean rescue to get the same benefit as fire, ambulance, veterans. So.
So, so moved.
I need a motion to open. Motion by Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the hearing is now open. Do we have any public comments?
I think we are all in support.
Motion to close?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kors, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The local laws has been passed. Local law to amend Village Code two twenty dash two, three point two, general sewer use permits, two twenty dash three point three, special sewer use permits, two twenty dash six point nine A, sewer connection fee, to update the sewer connection fees, require the village board of trustees to issue special sewer use permits instead of the superintendent, and reduce the threshold for requiring special sewer use permits from the village board of trustees. Do you want to briefly discuss this?
Yeah, this is just to require that special sewer use permits, which are for permits for sewer usage, that's a little bit more than just a general sewer use permit, would be reviewed and approved by this board, as opposed to just the superintendent of public works. And then it also increases fees that were as low as, I believe, ten dollars in the code that needed to be amended.
I'll make a motion. Motion to open by trustee Kors, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? Motion to close? Motion to close by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kors, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed, I need a motion to adopt.
Salute.
Motion to adopt by trustee Kors, seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Local law is now adopted. That brings us to discussion items. We have the two thousand twenty-five spring leaf and brush pickup. Says the Sag Harbor, this is what you were speaking about earlier, Bob. Sag Harbor Highway Department will pick up leaves and light brush the week of April fourteenth to April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's a one-time pickup.
Use it or lose it.
That's it. And that brings us to Mary and Eddie. It says, skip the stuff. What that's about.
Plastic.[1787.54]
Okay.
There it comes.
Oh. Can you introduce yourself? So.
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you for making this opportunity available to talk to you about skip the stuff. I'm Mary Ann Eddie on ninety six Hampton Street. Um, so when the Environmental Advisory Committee was here last February twenty four. Um, we talked about what we had done, we were working on what was on the horizon. One of the things that was on the horizon was skip this stuff. And when Bob brought, excuse me, an update, update. I'm sorry, update, um, just February now, he mentioned that this was a current project. So tonight we're here to talk about what we think is the possible role for skip the stuff here in Sag Harbor. So this has been a team effort and I'm going to introduce the team. So we have back there, we have Suzanne Dark Jansen. She's a member of the Sag Southampton Town Sustainability Committee. Uh, and we have two members of the Surf Rider, um, foundation. We have. Uh, Jennifer Schwartzman and we have Christine Capelli. Is that right? Catalina? No, Capelli.
You gotta come on now. You gotta get that Italian name right. You know, make sure you pronounce all the vowels, okay?
They get very upset.
All right.
Anyway, not only is she a member of Surf Rider, but she's also a resident in Sag Harbor.
Okay.
She was the one who was responsible for putting a lot of the meat on the bones of this presentation and I'm going to let her carry it off.
Very good.
Carry on. Yes.
Welcome, Ms. Capelli.
Thank you so much. Thank you for listening to us tonight and for hearing us out on skip the stuff. Uh, which is an international effort to reduce single use plastic pollution. Um. If you guys read the news, if you're online, you saw it. It's everywhere. I saw the headline today. It's microplastics are in our chicken nuggets. Uh, you can't escape these headlines and everyone's concerned about it with good reason. We've been polled this whole time, plastics can be recycled. But the real truth of it is, um. Only twelve percent or about, um, excuse me, only nine percent are actually able to be recycled. Leaving the other twelve to be incinerated, which then releases toxic poisonous gases. And then the remainder of it all goes into our landfills, which we know it doesn't stay there. Animals, wind runoff from rainy storm, um, it carries and it travels. Uh. Uh, so yeah, unfortunately, at present, there's seventeen billion pounds of plastics in our ocean.
It's crazy.
Billions with a B.
It's crazy.
It is. And it's shocking. It's upsetting. And for a coastal community like ours, I don't need to tell you what that means. Um. But yes, it's it's why we're all concerned. So of course, you're probably questioning where is it all coming from? A lot of the plastics produced, forty two percent of them are single use. So single use, those are those forks, spoons, knives we all use and toss. Our straws in our coffee, our coffee cup sometimes. Um, and yeah, just some stats about that. Over five hundred billion disposable food service items are produced. And used every year. A hundred million of them in the U S alone are plastic utensils. Those little condiment packets we get, our duck sauce, our ketchup. About eight hundred fifty five billion of them are just trash. People don't use them.
I hate them, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of us do. Um. And the reason we know that this is happening locally as well is we do a lot of beach cleanup. So a lot of the volunteers. Um, with our chapter and other groups like like Surf Rider Foundation. Um, are recording the data of what we're picking up. So Surf Rider volunteers from twenty nineteen till now have done about a hundred seventy nine plus to a hundred eighty beach cleanups. And what we're seeing is that approximately seventy percent of it is food service items and all the litter from that. About, oh, I won't read all the stats off, but plastic utensils were close to nine hundred. Um, plastic stirrers over nearly four hundred. Um, and yeah, it's it's all this takeout stuff that we all know and have seen and, um, yeah, that we get every day. It's a costly problem. Like, yes, it's a burden for the customers. We all have our drawers of it. We throw it in the trash. Um, it's an unnecessary burden for the customers, but it's also an extra expense for all the restaurants. They're putting it into the bags and it's just getting thrown away. It's money that could be put elsewhere. And as we talked about at the up top, it can't be recycled. So it's incinerated or in the landfill. Which then just builds on our plastic pollution problem. But there is an answer. Um, so skip the stuff. It's a very simple solution to an extremely complex problem. Uh, all all it does, you just skip it. You just say, no, I don't need those tonight. Um, and so it becomes an at request rather than the restaurants just automatically putting it into your bags. And we've seen it across the country. There are restaurants that are doing it. East Hampton Village passed it. So even closer to home, we're seeing it being implemented. Um, we're seeing customers and businesses starting to do it because they know it's the right thing. Customers can still get what they need. If they need it, you can get them. You just ask for them. Uh, if you don't need them, you just skip the stuff. And then for businesses, it's as simple as just not putting it in. You can have them available. But we all learned how not to get a plastic bag at the supermarket. It can be a new behavior that we all learn. Um, and then there can also be educational materials. So customers can start to understand what the implications are, what the benefits are, et cetera. Um, so it really is a simple solution that people can opt into. Um, so yeah, so that is all the reasons why. And I'll turn it back when I'm ready, Anne.
I would, if I could just interrupt for a second. I noticed. Cause I frequent all the restaurants and takeout and stuff throughout the village. That most of them. They don't put it in the bag. There's only a few that do. But they say, I'll say, okay, where's the forks and the spoons? And they'll direct you to an area. But ultimately, they're plastic forks and spoons and. So my question is, what is the difference in cost between a plastic spoon? Cause provisions, as you know, doesn't use plastic. They use.
The wooden.
The wooden spoons and the wooden forks. And I frequent provisions a lot. I'm just curious what the cost difference is between a plastic spoon and a wooden spoon. Or do you know?
Uh, we can follow up with that because I it changes frequently and it also depends on how many vendors are buying into it.
Right. Cause I'm thinking of how how could we incentivize people to use the eco-friendly stuff?
There are, uh, one of, um, Surf Rider Foundation has a program called Ocean Friendly Restaurants. And part of participation in that is a food supply, um, a vendor list that you can get access to. Um, so that is part of the education that could happen where we're learning where to get the alternative materials.
Okay.
Could it answer?
And what my.
Can we get that list of restaurants?
The Ocean Friendly Restaurants.
Yeah. Or I guess, is it online?
It is.
Okay, we can just go look online. Okay. Great.
I don't know if you if you saw this earlier this week. This report from the University of New Mexico came out and they said that average human brain has five bottle caps. Were of microplastic in it. And not just your brain and.
Human brain.
They do it for autopsies. It's it's was released on the eighth, so you can check me on it, but it's still saying.
There's a lot of shocking stuff, like they've looked at placentas and newborn babies and they'll find microplastics in the placentas. So it's.
What exactly is the of is the law gonna like? I'm I'm curious as to what that's gonna do and how it's gonna affect businesses and the public. What exactly are we we passing when we pass a law to skip the stuff?
Can we force restaurants to behave in a certain way as a village?
I mean, you probably can, maybe restaurants operating within the village, you might be able to legislate this, but it's it's always going to be a matter of enforcement, right? That's an issue.
I look, I'm, uh, as you know me, I've always been.
I'd have to see what it says and kind of.
But you said East Hampton have done this?
East Hampton Village.
Village.
And you can also follow up with sample policy.
Yeah.
Great.
So what we want to do is we have a bit of a timeline in mind as to how we're going to get this over the. The the up here is, um. Uh, this spring and summer, twenty twenty five, what we'd like to do is really work on education. Both in the businesses, the restaurants that take out places, but just generally in the businesses and the community as to why this is important. I think it's also a time when we can collect model legislation, Westchester County, Los Angeles, New York City. And bring that together and see how different municipalities have handled and tackled this same problem. Um, and then what we'd like to do in the fall is we'd like to come back and really share our experience with what we found out. And we're hoping that at that point, we're going to find that there's suitable language that we can pass as a village. It's going to steer us in the right direction. Uh, what we'd like to do is have something here that just requires them to have it upon request. Oh, that's the idea. We'll see where we get. The other thing is, is that, um, it was, uh. What's the other point? Oh, a six month grace period. So if we pass it in the fall, the idea being that this would come into fruition. Um, say.
Beginning of.
Tomorrow, today, the beginning of next season, fourteen months from now.
Perfect.
That sounds really.
Yeah.
Reasonable and legitimate. Yeah.
Plus savings for the restaurants too.
Yeah.
It's a savings. That's one of the things I want to do is I want to calculate that number.
It's a habit, like a lot of things. It's just a habit that needs to be broken. Yeah.
Say you don't need it, they still put it in. It's a habit. So.
My listen, my question would be, what's the cost difference? If you're saving money, then why wouldn't you save money and do something that's right? For the community and for the environment. So. That's why I asked about the number. Cause business, you know, they're always looking at what's the bottom line here.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to action items. Resolution to adopt the budget for the general fund twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six and roll call vote.
Hi, Louisa approved.
Okay.
Passed.
Approved.
Trustee Plum?
Aye.
Mayor Gardella?
Aye. Okay, so the budget is passed. Resolution to adopt the budget for the sewer fund twenty twenty five. Again, it's a roll call vote.
Do we need to make motions and?
I think it's just a roll call vote.
The roll call vote.
That's the motion.
Oh, that is okay. Thank you, Bart. Sorry. Yeah.
That was your vote.
Approved.
Trustee Corr?
Approved.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Okay, resolution to approve the salary schedule for full time employees for fiscal year, June first, twenty twenty five to May thirty first, twenty twenty six. Any motion?
These are in your books as well. It's small, full pages to cut through.
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution awarding the R F P for professional services for the replacement of A dock. And the addition of a new floating dock to the sole bidder, L K. McLean Associates Engineering and Survey, B P C L K M A.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to award the twenty twenty five launch service to Kenny Deeg. Motion by trustee Corr. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign an agreement with Kenny Deeg. Of the Sag Harbor launch for the use of overflow moorings.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane.
Two thousand for all the moorings or each? No.
Two thousand for all.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion by trustee Kane.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign an agreement. With Kenny Deeg of the Sag Harbor launch for the use of a portion of the vacant lot. At Bulkhead and forty five Bay Street. And that would be for forty five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Mayor Gardella to r- resolution authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign an agreement with Breakwater Yacht Club for the use of a portion of the vacant lot. At forty five Bay Street. That would be the amount for three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution granting permission upon New York State Department of Transportation. Approval to the Sag Harbor Police Department to install license plate reader equipment. Within the geographical jurisdiction. The village of Sag Harbor and the state of New York.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to appoint Sag Harbor election inspectors for twenty twenty five general village election. Election Inspector Chairperson Gail Heine. Election Inspector Geraldine Masalanka and and election inspector Valerie Sujei. Election Inspector Nathan Brown and poll clerk Brenda Paloga. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing mayor to sign copy release agreement with Toshiba for the building department. That's in the amount of thirty, what is it, thirty six months with the monthly fee of. Two hundred seventy nine dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution authorizing extension of computer shared capability agreement. This is with the town of Southampton. It's in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty eight cents.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution of the Board of Trustees approving the appointment of Edward Corcoran as an alternate member to the planning board.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, welcome Eddie.
Welcome Eddie, indeed.
So carried. Resolution accepting budget transfers for January twenty fifth to March twenty, excuse me, January twenty twenty five to March twenty twenty five. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization for Kate Lucassio, village clerk administrator to attend the. What was that? I I M C Municipal Clerks Institute from July thirteenth, twenty twenty five to July seventeenth, twenty twenty five in Latham, New York. Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization to approve the following requests. Sen Restaurant at twenty three Main Street. Or asking for twelve proposed outdoor seats, Lulu's Kitchen and Bar. Another twelve proposed outdoor seats, Sag Pizza. Eight proposed outdoor seats, Page. And sixteen proposed outdoor seats. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Robert Drake, Chief of Police, requests authorization to hire the following part time police and traffic control officers for twenty twenty five season. Effective June first, twenty twenty five at the below hourly rates. Police officer. Adam D Gregorio at thirty dollars per hour, traffic control officer Lady Torado at twenty five dollars per hour. Traffic Control Officer Laville Cruz at twenty two dollars an hour. Traffic Control Officer Lucy Gardella at twenty dollars an hour, Traffic Control Officer Carla Morales at twenty dollars an hour. Traffic Control Officer Abigail Flores at twenty dollars an hour. Traffic Control Officer Michaela Cantrell at twenty dollars per hour. Traffic Control Officer Hannah Salazar at twenty dollars per hour. And Traffic Control Officer Anthony Agori at twenty dollars per hour. Have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did we get all? So this is a total of nine. Is that what we needed?
Coming back. Um, I believe my.
Twelve, I thought.
Couple more they're looking for.
Yeah, I think we'll have, uh, at least what we had last year, we have more applications. They just went through job fairs. I speak at the local schools. I know they got another three or four applications for that. I think we're just trying to stay at the number we have last year.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion, right? And who seconded it?
Jean.
Jean seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Robert Drake, Chief of Police, request that police unit one thirty nine, a two thousand eighteen Ford Interceptor. Be decommissioned and removed from the police department's vehicle fleet. Due to wear and tear. Once properly decommissioned, Chief Drake is also requesting authorization to put this vehicle out to bid. For a minimum of three thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, a second?
Who wants a new car?
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Robert Borey, Harbor Master, is requesting authorization to increase the hourly rate for Harbor Master Christian Doria from thirty five to thirty six dollars an hour. For fiscal year, June first, twenty twenty five to May thirty first, twenty twenty six. And I think this is. Much warranted, Chris, doesn't absolutely. It's outstanding job.
So moved.
All right, motion by trustee Kane. Have a second? Seconded by trustee Corr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapi, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Village Ambulance Corps, request permission to add. Mia Cheska, Gangemi. Mia Cheska, Gangjemi, I got that right?
That's good.
Meredith Sporalek as new, that's Borlitch? As new volunteer members and add them to the insurance roll, and these, both these members are college students that'll be home for the summer.
Oh, great.
They'll be volunteering, so we got two, two already on board. I'll make that motion, I have a second? Seconded by trustee plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization to accept the resignation of the following paid ambulance staff, E M T Kevin Gillen and Benjamin Dahl. Effective immediately. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee plum, seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Does that mess up the group?
No, they have other paid people that come on and people that leave there. Okay, accept February twenty twenty five bank reconciliations and collateral reports. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee course, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization to refund the following small claims assessments, Gail La Pinto for one thousand three hundred and ten dollars and two cents. Ricardo Romo Leroy at four hundred dollars and seventy two cents. Motion by trustee course, have a second? Seconded by trustee plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Charlotte Perez, these are action, excuse me, these are action items, special event and special use permits. Charlotte Perez of the Wounded Warrior Project. Request permission to have the annual soldier ride of the Hamptons on Saturday, July nineteenth twenty twenty five. From seven AM to twelve PM. As the soldiers come into the village, they will regroup at Haven's Beach and proceed to a marine park. They'll go through the business district and over the bridge, Mrs. Perez also requests permission. To place signs on the grassy areas of Long Wharf from July fifth to July nineteenth twenty twenty five. Lastly requesting assistance from the Police Department. Are we okay with this, uh, Michael?
Yeah, this is always, uh, they're pretty simple.
Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee course, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Kristen Santori, Program Manager of the Church, requests permission to have the Spring Jubilee Celebration on Saturday, May third. Twenty twenty five from eleven AM to four PM at Madison, at forty eight Madison Street, the church.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, do I have a second? Seconded by trustee plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, Joanne Lyles and of the In Jordan's Honor, LTD, requests permission to have the five K run walk. On Sunday, July twenty seven twenty twenty five from seven AM to ten thirty AM. Also requesting permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf Route. Wound, excuse me, Route one fourteen from July thirteenth twenty twenty five to July twenty seven twenty twenty five. Additionally requesting to have two aerial trucks hoisting large American flags. Says here cannot be placed on village sidewalks, I don't know why that was put in there, anyway, as well as erecting two small tents. Lastly requesting assistance of two police officers, I guess we're okay with this too, Michael?
I don't know if you talked to the chief, um obviously a very worthy cause.
Right.
Um to be honest, it is a little taxing on the Police Department.
Okay.
It normally involves a whole entire car, not two police officers.
Right.
Um we were shutting multiple roads on a Sunday in July at the same time, um and kind of. Clocks up everything, um so it normally involves.
Is there, have we talked to her and, and seen if there's any, anything that they could do to?
Personally, but I mean, I know the, the thing is because it's Jordan's birthday.
Right.
Around that time, um I was talking to the chief earlier, maybe in the future suggesting. Uh doing it in the off season, if you want, sports they want, or.
That would be smart.
You know, to try to do maybe like Katie's Courage route instead, I know there's meaning and sentiment to every part of her, it's, it's quite a nice. Uh thing to be able to do, uh but it is.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So we'll approve it for this year and then.
And then we'll talk to Joanne about it in the future.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee course, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, Sag Harbor Historical Museum requests to have an annual fundraiser. History under our feet on Saturday, July twelfth twenty twenty five from five to seven PM. On the Custom House Lawn, one ninety two Main Street. Motion by trustee plum, have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee course, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Darlene Williams requests authorization to have the Black Authors Festival at forty one Bay Street Lawn, behind the Breakwater Yacht Club. On Saturday, August second twenty twenty five from four PM to eight PM. Also requesting to place a banner on the grassy area of Long Wharf from July nineteenth to August second. Motion by trustee course, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, that brings us now to approve the payment of the bills. Warrant number thirty seven for four hundred thirty eight thousand one hundred ninety four dollars and three cents, warrant number forty two. The amount of four hundred thirty three thousand eight hundred ninety seven dollars and six cents. Warrant number forty three and the amount of two hundred forty nine thousand twenty one dollars and fifty five cents. Warrant number forty four, the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred seventy two dollars. Warrant number forty five and the amount of twenty seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty two cents. Warrant number forty six and the amount of three hundred and thirty dollars. Excuse me, three hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty three dollars and thirty eight cents, after you start looking at all these numbers. Yes.
Say about warrant number thirty seven is amended, we approved it originally last year, but there was a typo, so that's just back on, not last year, last month, sorry.
Okay.
So it's just an amendment now.
So with that note from the clerk, I need a motion to approve all the bills.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee course, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are late, that brings us now to public comments, fifteen minute public session, input for comments and questions. Three minutes per speaker, anybody like to speak? Any comments? Yes?